Good evening, the time is now 6:10 and we will call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Sanders if you would lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Conata, if you would please call the roll.
Ms. Chaney?
Here.
Mr. Gay?
Here.
Mr. Mercier?
Here.
Ms. Muniz?
Here.
Ms. Parker?
Ms. Nancy Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Present.
Ms. Sanders-Howson?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Ms. Nicole Rodriguez?
Here. Okay. If we could please take a moment of meditation and consider the accident that just happened a few hours ago and all those parties that were involved. Thank you. Okay, we have one person signed up for public participation, Mr. Ryan Cornelius, if you would please come and give us your name, address, and [inaudible].
Ryan Cornelius, 317 Steel Street, New Britain. Good evening. I'd like to start by stating that while I still have reservations about this theme program as it currently exists, I worked diligently this summer to create a schedule that worked to ensure the program advanced as effective as possible and helping students become better. I've created resources for the push-in models who place the theme teaching in grade-level bands that fit their strengths and try to help colleagues understand the changes to the best of my ability. So while I was not an early supporter, my efforts are evidence, I will work tirelessly to ensure our students are put in a situation as conducive to learning as possible. To that end, I would like to state that I'm very concerned about the changes in testing that are taking place, mainly the phasing out of NWBA at the elementary level. This phase-out was explained to teachers as an attempt to decrease the number of tests taken by students. The district turned three NWBA math tests and three NWBA reading tests to a single administration of the reading test to be given in the fall. In place of those six tests, the district is requiring that we give four ELA benchmark tests, four math benchmarks, in addition to four theme tests, and since we turned six fairly reliable tests, research-based tests, into six homemade, or twelve homemade tests. Another popular response for the reason was that these tests are expensive. While I'm sure that's true, my guess is that taxpayers, myself included, would strongly prefer their money be spent on research-based tools as opposed to raises for some of the district's already highest-paid personnel. Multi-billion-dollar companies spent years working on tests and pilot tests for several administrations prior to rolling them out, understanding the importance of the data these tests provide. I would confidently state that New Britain did not take such care in creating their tests. These homegrown tests were also created to correlate to grade-level work, which would seem to make sense. However, many of our students are working well below grade level, and these tests will not provide a true picture of their growth, nor will it allow teachers to effectively gauge the level at which every one of their students is working. Unfortunately, because there is not an existing dataset for any of these tests, this year is essentially a benchmark year, a year zero, if you will. There will be no way to effectively assess the impact of this theme program, be it positive or negative. The rebuttal to this will be, but we still use S-Back, and we can compare those scores year over year to gauge progress. This is unsatisfactory. Our S-Back scores are extremely low as a district, with roughly 10% of our students being proficient or above proficient. Beyond that, S-Back scores do not allow for teachers to make real-time adjustments to instruction as the test is only given in the spring. S-Back serves no use for teachers in this district, and most teachers that I know have little to no idea how their students performed on this assessment. NWBA tests and the many tools provided on the platform allow teachers to gauge real-time progress. They provide data that allows them to find and create work at each student's level. They allow teachers to push students that are well above grade level and identify areas of need when they work with well, with below-grade-level students. They allow us to create customized instructions for each student, an initiative that is well-regarded as a future of education and is a cornerstone of the mission statement presented in the CSDNB 2016 to 2021 Five-Year Strategic Plan. Despite this, in the last four years, no PD was provided to the district by the district to assist teachers in accessing and appropriately using the vast amounts of information available on the NWBA platform. Because of this, many teachers in the district do not understand the true value of NWBA. I have worked hard to try to understand why our testing is changing. I have asked questions and expressed concern with the board and many district-level administrators. I began my quest to understand in May, and yet in September, I have the same concerns and no more answers than I did in May. At least that makes sense. Sarah, I truly hope your initiative is successful. Our students deserve that. But I ask that you and the board immediately reinstate NWBA testing across all grade levels in place of district assessments, so we are all able to fairly assess the effectiveness of this theme program, something the assessment schedule stands in direct composition to. I am open and available to help with this initiative at any point. I can meet you at any time and available at any point you need me. Thank you.
Thank you. There is no one else signed up for public participation. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Anyone else who would like to address the board? Okay, last and final time, anyone else who would like to address the board? Thank you, public participation is now closed. We will now hear from our superintendent for the superintendent's report.
It's hot. It's hot. So tonight's report is mostly oper-- yeah, there's a piece of weather in there. Mostly operational, just now that we're on day three of the opening of the school year. I am going to go over a little bit of it with you. I want to explain, actually, to some folks about how we are going about looking at hot spots in the area in terms of classrooms being too large, right? Not the heat. But I'll start with the heat first. I just sent a connect ad to our families that tomorrow and Thursday will be half-day early really these days again. Mr. Smedley did go through buildings today. Mr. Moore has been helping me gauge temperatures, and we want to be sure, and we understand it's a hardship for families, but we want to be sure that the kids have cool places to go after school. There's a lot of opportunity outside of our school buildings sadly where there is air-conditioning available for students. So it will be a half-day Wednesday and Thursday. We just spoke to the YMCA prior to coming in the room, and the YMCA will provide after-school care for those families who have already, who already sign up and are part of it. So for our working families who do take advantage of the YMCA's after-care, that will be available in all buildings except for Smalley, which is currently housed in the Hope John Paul Building. That's the only building where there is no air-conditioning available at all, at all. So, save Smalley, all the other schools, elementary schools where parents are worried about the after-child care, we will have that for them there. I will be meeting tomorrow, Mr. Moore, myself, we'll be meeting with the mayor to discuss potential options for looking at cooling in our buildings going forward, because just given, given the trend and the temperatures, and you know, we're just in the beginning of September, and we don't want to keep doing this every single year, sending kids home, but we also have to make sure that they are conducive to learning. And anything over 85 to 90 degrees, I would harbor a guess that all of us would start melting ourselves. So our teachers are upstairs in some second and third floors, and it's brutally hot for people. So anyway, that's, that's the update on the temperature. Hopefully, there will be a break in it Thursday night. The next, we're going to talk about hot spots right now currently, and I gave you two, two things. I gave you my, my class notes with potential solutions, and that's on my superintendent report, but I also gave you a 22-page document, and I will say Jeff wanted to make it prettier, and I said, "Don't worry about making it prettier, it says what it needs to say," and I've got, I've got the highlights here for you as well. It's not by school, but it's largest to smallest class sizes, and what you see here is just elementary school right now. Okay? Yeah. So, I'm going to go over the hot spots, and there are some we typically wait a bit for, but there are some I'm not waiting for. So the first is Jefferson Kindergarten. Classrooms are currently at 30 and 32. So we were, we are in communication with the building principal on Friday, and we are ready to make a move. You'll see the, in the center is the action or potential action. There will be a transfer, and I'm going to leave that alone until we notify teachers. There will be a transfer for one of the, one of our elementary schools over to Jefferson to reduce the class size. So we will add a fourth kindergarten classroom at Jefferson. This is the second year in a row that we've had a bubble of students. Last year at Jefferson, we had a bubble of kindergarteners that are now up to first grade, and they have four first-grade classrooms. So we are, we are seeing increasing numbers in the Jefferson area. Long-term, we, we have to think about, you know, and it's not as easy, and I'll point to Jeff at this, is to just change the lines in the district. It's just not that simple, but space is an issue. We also know we have space issues at Holmes Elementary. There is absolutely nowhere. I know Ms. Robles at Jefferson called me by the end of the, of today to let me know where she would be putting the new kindergarten classroom, which will have about 19 students in it. So we do have a little available space at Jefferson. At Holmes, we don't have available space, not to house an additional classroom if the need arises. So Jefferson, we will act on pretty quickly. It's already in the works, so we reduce that. We've let the principal know that. Another, another high area right now, and again, this, we, we communicated to building principals on the second day of school, I believe it was, Dr. Sanders, correct? To let them know, to communicate to their staff that there are some hot spots in our district, and there's some hot spots within a building where there's a potential remedy right within the building. So they might have a fourth-grade classroom at 21, 22, and they've got a fifth-grade classroom at 29, and they can do some of the shifting with their own staff within the building. And we just came from our cross-union meeting, and I, we're going to work on a better communication so people understand. This is something that happens every year in every district. You know, we have a finite amount of dollars, and, and as I said upstairs, we're not willing to pull out the charge card, say, "Well, we'll just keep adding more people." When, when, if there's no money in the wallet, there's no money. And we have, and you can look through this, the first two pages starting, and I numbered them, it's old-fashioned numbering, if you're going to see. The first two pages show the real hot spots for us. Contractual, we, we knew we were above contract at Jefferson. Not only that, but it's just not good for kids to be in that large a class size. Our upper grades, our grades three, four, and five, if they're at 27, that's still within contractual limits, while not the best. I have to worry about primary immediately, K-1, 2, to make sure our numbers are healthy and strong there. And you can see it's, it's in descending order. The top we have is Jefferson at 32, that's our largest class size. All of page one stays within the range of 32 to 27. Page two, from 27 to 25. Notice right to the left of that also, though, is the grade level. And so you'll see how we're prioritizing. And I know I've received some, I've received an email from a parent concerned about class size at one of our elementary schools. Class size of 28, it's a fourth-grade classroom. While all of those are always concerning, we have to first address the youngest learners, knowing that the, the ratio of adult to student needs to be higher there. So that, that is what's going on. I'm going to look on page two. So we do see at Chamberlain, we have low numbers in our kindergarten and low numbers in our grade one. You can see that as you go all the way through. This is a 22-page document. You can see all of the class sizes. We're, we're not touching kindergarten yet, even if it's a low class size, because we don't know. We don't have kindergarteners registered yet in power schools, so we don't know if they're going to be entering. We're only on the third day of school. Historically, we've seen Smalley and Chamberlain, their numbers increase in kindergarten as parents come and do some late registration. So we're keeping those numbers low for the immediate future, to ensure that we don't take something away before it's needed. And we also know at Pulaski that we do have one of our class sizes, which I didn't afford you with right now, and it's in our elective areas. It's a health class at 32, and that to me is not healthy. So we, but we already have existing staff that we can go and repair that with, with some itinerant staff. All in all, it was a decent opening, I think, to the school year. I did give you a transportation update as well, just for days one and two. We got a really nice shout-out from one of our families today on Facebook, which I readily sent to you within about a second. I pinged it right over, to let you know that, and I just have to say, kudos to the, the facilities for transportation, because they're the ones that get this stuff up and running in. And we knew we had a tall hill to climb as far as transportation goes. A lot of eyes were on us, and I think that it's gone very well for student and specialty. And again, Mr. Conata, with your communications, Mike, and really all the principals too, that have been really responsive and on the ball with letting parents know when there was an issue. We had a slight issue on day one, we're dominoed, we had 15 minutes late at the high school, and it was for safety. The police officers had stopped to make sure we were safe there, go over to DiLoreto, and it was a 30-minute delay there, which ended up in like an hour delay for some of our families with a kid who was getting off the bus. The kids were not on the bus that whole time, they were waiting outside, but, and, and again, we, and I don't know what Matt, what you do, but you do something, you boost it out there, however. And so families are aware and they know. And so that's, we've gotten really good feedback, and I have to say, Matt's been on, any, anything that anyone posts on Facebook, he will respond to immediately, and so that's been really positive, and families have been appreciative of that real-time response. The next thing, and so anyway, I just gave to you how we communicated everything to our staff and our families. I'm going to talk a little bit about physicals, that's always the other hot button with students. We started about a week before we brought the kids in, our attendance team under Sander Sanford, our attendance team and our Family Resource Center staff started making phone calls to families if we knew that they were families that didn't have their physical form in. And I took, actually, an email right from Jackie Matty, so what you see there is right her words, and she just said that the one thing that she notices is she continues to see about one-third to one-half of the physicals, and the shots are done before August 1st. It's the parents not remembering to send in the paperwork, right? I know that Jackie Matty, who is that health purist, as I'll call her, has been working closely with Mr. Pierce at the high school, and also at our middle schools, and Mr. Foran. We don't want to send kids home. That's the last thing that we want to do. So we are giving them some time, and Partnership Office is continuing to make those phone calls every day, and basically harping on people to bring in those forms. I do know, I wish Jackie were here, we, we have scheduled probably 30 physical exams for students who don't have it across our four school-based health centers. And so we're doing everything we can to help them get into school. And I think, I think that's it right now. Any questions from that? Can we rewind it?
Just a smidge.
Oh, as far as, okay, so, so Ms. Rodriguez was just saying that some people have just come in, actually, and we were talking about class size just before you came in, so welcome. And how we prioritize the need and, we know we have hot spots. Our biggest priority right now is our kindergarten classrooms at Jefferson, who are at 30 and 32. We have a huge bubble of families that have moved in the neighborhood. We are, we are thinking that now that the, the new apartments are fully occupied on Corbin Avenue, that's added to our numbers at Jefferson. You know, we, we are going to have to talk long-term about space, because that's an issue. And for us, it's the primary grades K through 2 to make sure that they're whole. We try to keep them, I mean, contractually, it's at 25 or below, and we can go up to 27. We never want our kids' classrooms to be that. And you'll see through the numbers that they're not that. Jefferson is an anomaly, and it's a huge bubble, and we have to take care of it. Our intermediate grades, grades three, four, and five, you will see 27s and 28s at those grade levels. And, and it's not that we're not attending to it, we are, but we have to take care of the first first. The other issue becomes no space in a building. Mr. Kane and I just talked to Mr. Moore today about potentially looking at, long-term, do we, do we look to get another portable maybe outside of Holmes Elementary? That's, that's a plus. There is absolutely no room in some of our buildings, in a lot of our buildings. And so that's something that we are, we are going to be actually talking about with the mayor tomorrow as well. So that was the update.
Question about preschool. I understand there were a bunch of students who registration wasn't completely--
Oh, yes. What happened?
Oh, pending. So similar to, so Mr. Gay was just asking about the preschool registration. We had a lot pending, because we have online registration now, which is-- And I will say to you again that the Partnership Office reached out to, the Family Resource Centers actually reached out to all of those preschool families to make sure that they knew what part they needed to register. I went down to see Central Reg on Friday, I think it was, and it was a beautiful thing, because everyone was caught up. So we are still reaching out to families to get the babies in. The other thing I forgot to mention is thank you to all the staff who rode those buses for two days straight for preschool, to make sure that any little one that got on, we knew exactly who they were. And I think it, having the parent right there at the bus stop and saying whether or not the registration was ready or not ready was very helpful, because we didn't get little ones coming to our school who we didn't know who they were. So that was very positive. So we're still reaching out for preschool families.
So do you have any idea how many of that--
I can find that out for you. Ms. Wavy, you don't happen to know, I'm putting you on the spot right now, sorry. Number of pending registrations.
So we have--
Jeff can find out. There he is.
Currently, under, you know, it's in two different levels, a returning form versus the brand-new form of students. So right now, I'm seeing 110 PK-3s under pending, for the new one, PK-4, 106. Definitely our largest group that haven't worked their way through the process yet.
That's 200 students--
200-plus kids who are not coming to preschool because their not, registrations aren't complete?
Well, I don't know necessarily. I guess when we talk about complete registration, that's down to the point of assigned contract, correct? You can say that much? So, in some cases, that's what it comes down to, that they're, they're in need of doing that part. We certainly have appointments all week currently for Central Reg, but they're not all filled up either. So we're, we're at the point, tomorrow is probably our last day where we're more filled than not, and then you start looking on the schedule, and there's a lot of open. So that way, that's push for getting those parents and through the process, you know, they're available to do that part. So, so far as not being able to make an appointment is not an issue at that point.
Do we have a sense of sort of where the breakdown is? Is that, is this parents not realizing that they have some extra thing they still need to do?
I believe that. I would assume it's the most likely scenario for a lot of it. They thought they were done at that point, and that's where that individual reached out to get them back in to finish the process, is where they are now. I mean, from a kindergarten standpoint, I know we're talking PK, but that's obviously been the big push and worry because of those numbers, and I see it's a 91% finished on the Kinders right now. And PKs are our biggest group of ones to finish, so.
So our next board meeting will come with updated numbers on that? Just let Daisy know that? Thank you.
Absolutely. I run.
Okay, good. Thank you, Jeff.
Excellent. Any other questions about the superintendent's report? We should?
Yes.
Thank you, Superintendent Sarah. Next, we have board reports.
If I may.
Sure.
Next Thursday, September 13th, is my annual fundraiser, fundraiser for the New Britain High School Marching Band in memory of my son Ben. It's at Alverian Beer Company, which is child and dog friendly. $20 to get in, we always have great raffle prizes. We have donated over $50,000 to the marching band since 2012, so come on out, it's fun. You might win something, goes, it all goes to the, the marching band.
I just want to say that the Back to School Bash was a success. It was very nice to have the Bees and the Back to School Bash, you know, join together. It was nice to see a lot of the families stay after, enjoy the game. And I just also wanted to say that on the first day of school, I was able to go to Smith Elementary School, and Alderman Christian Rosado was there as well. And kudos to the principal and assistant principal there. They did a wonderful job. Everything was very nice and organized, and the families were coming in, everyone was happy, and, you know, they had it nicely organized where, you know, the grades were divided, and so there was like no confusion. And, and for those families that work, they knew how to address them and, you know, detour them right away. So it was really good. So they did a great job, Smith Elementary School.
And let me just add to that convocation was awesome. The speaker was fabulous, really--
You mean me or the other one?
You too.
We just take, we just take you for granted.
Yeah, yeah.
The guy that you presumably paid to speak, you know, who talked about the generational differences, which was, got a lot of laughs, but it was really serious stuff. It was, it was good. It was, he was very entertaining as well as informative.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out with the, you know, all the, the heat we've been having, as I started my day today, I just wanted to acknowledge Robert Smedley. He was out there pumping gas 5:00 in the morning, checking our facilities. So the public should know that we are getting early starts to make sure that the schools are operational, the best we can get them. So thank you, Mr. Smedley, for your dedication and hard work.
I wanted to just add two things. One was to thank the Consolidated School District of New Britain for contributing to the North Oak Community Back to School Bash. We had over 250 people there, and everyone was able to leave with a uniform or a backpack. So thank you very much for your help in making that a success. We had a lot of community partners that came out and really, it was, it was a great event to see all the families come out and the kids come out. Thank you, Ms. Muniz, for helping. She was able to secure some mascots, cool smiles. We had a lot of people to come out and really rally together and get the kids back to school, so that was awesome. The other thing I wanted to take, just mention, the board liaisons, I did not forget about them. Since we are starting the school year, just wanted to run down the list of who they are, and then the list will go out to all the principals so that they know who you are, and I will remind you which schools you have if you don't remember. But just so that we can make sure that we're getting out to orientations and reported contact in case anyone needs anything, and really just making sure that it's up and running and that people don't feel like that there's, there's a liaison or a bridge between the board and the schools, because it's not the board, but we are working together with you all, and we really want to make sure that we're rolling up our sleeves if we can to help you too. So Adult Education is Ms. Annie Parker. The Alternative Center is Mr. Mercier. Chamberlain is Ms. Simmons. DiLoreto, myself. Gaffney, Ms. Chaney. Pals Academy, Ms. Simmons. Holmes Elementary, Ms. Conley. Jefferson, Ms. Rodriguez. Nancy Rodriguez. Lincoln Elementary, Mr. Mercier. New Britain High School, Ms. Conley. Satellite Career Academy, Ms. Muniz. Transitional Center, Mr. Sanders. North End Elementary, Ms. Parker. Pulaski Middle School, Ms. Muniz. Roosevelt. Ms. Chaney. School-based health centers, Mr. Gay. Slade Middle School, Ms. Chaney. Smalley Academy, Mr. Gay. Smith Elementary, Ms. Nancy Rodriguez. And Vance, Mr. Mercier. So this list is on, is online. It will be emailed to you all, and I just want to make sure that we are connecting and staying connected with you all throughout the school year. Yes, Mr. Smedley?
I just wanted to take a moment to thank Mr. Cornelius for coming out and speaking. I know that, you know, we, we've said repeatedly that we want to, we want to hear from people when there are issues, and just to provide some additional context, he did reach out to me back in June. I've asked that it be something that's taken up by the curriculum committee and looked at, because I, I think, in many ways, sometimes when there's a lot of teachers who complain about the amount of testing, and I think in part, some of the decision, at least when the board was having discussions around NWBA testing, was that it was felt that removing some of the quote-unquote "highest-stakes" testing may ease some of the burden from teachers, but I think it also is something when decisions are made, there are often two sides to an issue, and just making sure that we hear from both sides is important. issue, and just making sure that we hear from both sides is important. And so I'm going to ask again that, like, the curriculum committee maybe take that up at their next meeting as a discussion point and invite Mr. Cornelius and some of the other teachers, who may also want to express their concerns for sort of a more roundtable discussion and get a better feel from the district. Because I definitely feel, we've had the same debates as a board, that testing does serve a valid purpose, and it's trying to find that balancing point between the best use of our time and our, and our funding, and also not overburdening our teachers and our students with testing. So I welcome continuing that conversation and trying to keep working to get it right.
Also, on that note, that the committee meetings are open to the public. I'm not sure if everyone knows that, but they are open to the public. They're usually held the last week of the month. And I know that I spoke with the organizer with PAVE, who's with PLE. They want to attend a policy to talk about the parent engagement policy, and they would like. So we're gonna, we need to work with connecting with them and getting them here. But yes, so the last, the last week of the month is usually when we have our community, committee meetings. They are posted online for the dates and times that they are held. So if you are interested in something, please, please come out. They are more, you're more than welcome. And it's a portion of the body, it's not the full body, but anything discussed there then gets moved to the bigger body so that we can, if it's an action item, we can vote on it and approve it. Yes.
I almost forgot. I also want to say kudos to Grace Fellowship Church. They had volunteers out at Smith Elementary's. They came in numbers with their lunch packs, because they were helping our little babies in kindergarten, just, they were helping in the classrooms, just getting them to put their backpacks on their hooks, because, you know, everything is so new to them. So, and they did an amazing job. I'd love, I'd absolutely agree, so I wanted to put a shout out there to them, too.
Okay. Next, we have committee reports. I believe the only committee that recently met was Personnel.
Yes, we met last week, and there's three items coming up. One under old business and two under new business that we discussed in committee and have sent to the board to approve, so. But we have, do have some people who will speak to them.
Excellent.
Approvated.
Okay. The other committees, are they, I think that they would like to add or shout out for their next date, if they know it. No problem. All right. Please look at the consent agenda. There are three items. We have approving the minutes for the Special Board of Education meeting on August 20th, approve personnel transactions outside of summer authority, and accept report of personnel transactions through summer authority. If any one of those items you would like to remove, please do so now.
I don't know if it's B and C.
Just B and C.
Just C? Is this C? Personal transaction, September 4th?
No, I think this is.
So B is?
Which one is B?
There's one on B, which is in this report here.
All right, so I guess B and C then?
One, two, the fifth name down.
Fifth name down on the full packet, or fifth name?
One, two, three, four, five. It says S, true.
You have the one. Just the first packet.
I have two hundred packets. Okay. Oh, all right, no problem. Okay. So, B and C?
Yeah, B and C, because one is on B and the rest are on C.
No problem. All right. So A is fine, and we'll take up B. I need a motion?
A motion to approve items B and C.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
I actually just wanted to point out the number. Is that okay?
Sure.
Just a quick glance. There's 11 teachers, two language pathologists, a school psychologist, and 17 support personnel. That's all. I just.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Does that include both of them?
I believe it does. There's two other personnel transactions. I think they're more concerned on the admin side.
Right.
So, and two admins.
Yes.
Separately. Just wanted to show you the numbers.
Clarify, are those all vacancies that were filled in versus new positions?
That is correct.
Yes.
Are all vacancies empty?
That is correct.
And shortage areas like that?
I was gonna say, yeah, some shortage areas.
It's pretty cool.
Yep. That's all.
And the only, the other thing I'd like to add to that is very fiscally responsible. For those of you who were in the hiring process, I would say that you did your best to make sure that we didn't spend a dollar over what we had. And we appreciate that, because we know how hard that is when you are trying to fill a vacancy, especially when that's been there for a while, or for some of these shortage areas where in other districts, they're getting immense amounts of money.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor for approving, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Excellent. Okay, if there's one item on old business, you have a motion?
Motion to approve the revised job description for the in-school behavior support specialist.
Second.
All right. This item came back before the, came before the board the last meeting, and there was discussion about the title and making sure that the title reflected the job description, and that the title and the job description reflected what, I cannot remember the entity, but the high school partner that we have, that it was in compliance with the new initiative. Ms.
Mr. Pierce, I think can speak.
Mr. Pierce, can you just, was a brief about the change and what the change was? What it was and what it is now?
The change was really around the title. And to make sure that it included the supporting nature of the position, and correctly identified when we brought it up here, in-school supervisor, it wasn't a true embodiment of the support that the position would be supplying to the students. So beyond what I mentioned.
Okay. All right. Do you have any questions?
I just would like to say thank you for taking the time to take this back and make the needed changes, because I know sometimes it feels like, you know, it's nitpicky, but sometimes, especially with job descriptions and how things are put out there, the image matters a lot, too. And I think with this, this, I like, I like the way it looks down, and I think it definitely is a better reflection of where we're heading as a district. I think it's a fan.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Excellent. Okay. New business, we have, I need a motion to approve the new job description for the district coordinator partnerships and engagement.
Motion, second.
All right. Sure. I think that would be great. So Ms. Singleton, if you would come and speak to this, please.
This is the job description, the new one. Pupils Service Specialist, I was district liaison. Wait, wait, are we doing the partnerships and engagement?
This one is the partnerships and engagement.
Hold on, hold on, one second.
I was like, I was like, wait a minute.
I was, I'm sorry, stop that.
You're the person, this is Dr. Douglas.
This position, the job description has been revised. This was a position formerly held by Mrs. Putnam. And once Mrs. Putnam was moved to the talent office, that position has been filled by Ms. Sandra Stanford, and some of the duties and responsibilities were adjusted and aligned with the superintendent's plan, so that's why it was revised and brought back to you properly.
Key differences?
I will let Ms. Stanford speak to some of the changes regarding some of the different things that she'll be doing that Mrs. Putnam didn't have to.
Hello. Some of the main key differences at the bottom of the job description are really due vertically aligning from the FRC staff, the district attendance team, as well as, I forget the third one, I apologize. The district attendance team aligning pre-K, as Jeff alluded to earlier, in regards to in the family resource center, aligning it all the way up to the welcome center and to the high school. So we can vertically align the vision that Superintendent Sarah has been discussing all the way through.
The extended day learning opportunities.
I'm sorry. Extended day learning, I knew there was something else. The extended day learning opportunities, as well as working with other parties to provide more opportunities for our students that are relevant to that current day, in addition to offering two opportunities this year for credit after school, and PE and math, as we're planning math, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. The next one. Now she, now we have done, one second. Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Wavy.
Motion to approve the new job description for pupil services specialist out of district liaison.
Motion, second. This is a new position?
This is.
Like a new, new position, not a?
Not a repurposed position. Not a re.
Redone, redone.
I can clarify, because this is actually a new classification that would embody three
positions, if you will. Two of them are actually existing. One is for our students who are placed in approved private special education programs, and one is for the person who sort of handles the PPT process for students identified in our magnet schools. And then the third would be relatively new position that was kind of covered and handled by several people in the past, and we're really trying to streamline. And it would be a position that would manage the 504s, cage well in all of our magnet schools. We would also add to that tracking students who are in and out of our detention centers, in and out of hospitals, as well as children involved with DCF. So monitoring the 603s that come into, into district and ensuring the accuracy of those as well. The benefit for that new position, if you will, would be that the elementary school psychologists, who typically are responsible or have been responsible largely for the 504s in our magnet schools, that they would be able to no longer be responsible for those meetings, those children, and be able to really focus more on providing more services within their own, their own school, so our in-district school, so they can utilize more of their training, if you will, to provide direct services, through counseling, and to be a support to the leadership team. This person for this new position would also be able to go and attend the 504 meetings, because often what has happened is that the school psychologists, particularly at the elementary level, they would participate by phone. And so you never really get to go see the context, you don't get to meet the people or see the child. And so being able to go to those meetings, you know, it, it's more effective in terms of developing partnerships and being able to sort of negotiate, because it's often a negotiation at the magnet schools in terms of resources. We would sort of have one person who could help maintain fiscal responsibility so that the magnets aren't really leaning on us for para, one-to-one para, or additional supports that, you know, may or may not be needed, quite frankly.
And I just wanted to add to that, too. At the secondary level, you know, our, our high school, we reduced their guidance department by two, because they were going to the middle schools. So they're still with us, we just repurposed, we redistributed. And, and it's taking also the guidance counselors, who also had to do the planning of the 504s and attending these meetings, even if they're off-site. That sometimes takes a half a day by the time they travel there and back. And so it, it made sense to have one person designated to really handle the out-of-district sort of things. Thank you.
Roughly, how many students do we have placed out of district to have the, have 504 plans?
About 200 students.
Thank you.
And, and then the 603s is 200.
Well, so let me back up. That 200 embodies children who would have the 603s, children in and out of detention and hospitals, and the children with 504s.
Okay, okay, okay. I think in personnel, also, we mentioned, we talked about when you change the job, change the job description for this person, you're then able to allow school psychologists and others to then really do what they were trained to do versus this administrative task, which is not necessarily a task that they were ever trained to do.
Correct.
And then it alleviates sometimes the stress of, now I think we have seven vacancies for school psychologists who are like, I don't know how to do any of this stuff you're asking me to do, I'm gonna stay as long as I can, and then I'm gonna find a school psychologist job where I'm gonna be a school psychologist.
Right. And we had talked about how this lower-paid job might allow us to hire fewer school psych, higher-paid school psychologists, because they will be doing that job of being a school psychologist and not the administrative.
Piece.
Piece of that, so.
And we still have more work to do on that. I think with, with the pupil service department, you know, the work around truly moving away from a, thank you, I couldn't think of that one. Moving away from a PPT coordinator to truly a school psychologist is a model that we are looking to explore this year. This will be the, the planning year before we, and bringing school psychs to the table to talk about this as well.
Yeah, I think.
No, go ahead.
This position will start to skim some of the responsibility off the school psychologist, and yes, Superintendent, we will move forward to look at how we can really release them a little bit more to provide that continuum of services and support in our schools.
Right.
I, just to second what other people are saying, I really feel that the more we, especially with our needs, the more we can have our, you know, social workers, our school psychologists, and our support staff doing those functions rather than paperwork. I know that in special education and support services like that, there's a lot of frustration about how much time gets consumed with paperwork. So I definitely could support this. I do have just one other small question, just for, for my knowledge. With contracts like this, because I noticed it talks about the extra 10 additional days, is that, that, is that flex within the year, since they have the five days before the beginning of school, five days after the close of school, it's under the work schedule?
Right.
Is that something where they are given sort of floating holidays within the year, or are they paid at a slightly higher rate to reflect the additional 10 days?
So.
Kevin, you can probably.
Basically, the teacher's contract calls for 185 days, that's what your salary is basically. Salary's $8,000, it's $8 more, 85. If an individual worked 190 days, they're gonna be paid five additional days.
Okay. Because I know with some positions, they, they float it, basically saying like you have, you're still gonna work 185 days, and we'll give you additional days.
This is like wrap-up. It's pre-game and post-game, so the first five, it's like, what am I getting into for the year? What does this look like? What, what types of things do I need to kind of get myself my bearings, and who do I need to meet with? And then at the end of the year, okay, what loose ends do we have to tie up, right? Because a lot of support jobs have that five before and five after.
Yeah.
Any other additional questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Oh, that's right. Can we, can we make a motion to add them?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to add two items to, or add an item to the agenda, and that is two additional personnel transactions. One is the appointment of Rebecca Dedana as interim district supervisor of special education at New Britain High School, and the other is the appointment of Louisa Powers as the district supervisor of special education for the key program.
Second.
All right. Yes. All those in favor of adding it to the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Motion to approve the, to aforementioned appointments.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, Sarah, any?
Oh, I'm excited. I'm actually, Ms. Powers is here in the audience, so I will have her come up and talk briefly. We're really excited to, to have her on the team now as our new supervisor for our key autism program across the district. And I know Ms. Wavy and Ms. Singleton, Mr. Spalding couldn't be here, he's in class tonight. We usually have Monday night meetings, but he has a Tuesday class. But I know that they're here also to support Ms. Powers coming in, and Ms. Clark is here as well, I see her right there behind. So we're really happy to have you a part of the team.
I'm very honored, I appreciate it. I've served in the district for more than 17 years as a speech pathologist, and most recently, within the key program itself, really understanding the teamwork, the, the challenges ahead of us, the strengths that we have in the program. And as the parent of a child on the autism spectrum, I'm supremely excited to be part of this process and a great leadership team, and have gotten into work already, and riding buses, and meeting staff, and doing all that fun stuff that my hair, you know, kind of reflects my given day, the last few days. But I, I'm very excited and looking forward to working with the folks, the parents, and most particularly the students. So I appreciate it, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Other person that's here or not here?
Rebecca Dedana is not here. We'll be interviewing for that position soon, but we need help at the high school. Mr. Pierce could talk a little bit more.
Okay. Do we want to talk about that?
So.
When it happens?
When it happens.
When it happens, okay. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Excellent. Excellent.